All right. Welcome, everyone, to the May Work Session of the Board of Commissioners. We will start with the -- are they the Pledge of Allegiance, or you want to do?
We can do.
Yeah, let's do Pledge of Allegiance and move.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. One second while we call the roll here. Yeah, same thing on mine. I have it too, okay. Mr. DiMillo.
Present.
Mrs. Hall.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Homlin will not be here this evening. Mr. Holmes is probably on his way. Mr. McGarrett is not here. Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Connell.
Here.
And Mr. Luda.
Here.
Seven o'clock starts are tough. All right, we will start with the presentation from our auditors. And we have Mr. Pierce here, Mr. Don Pierce from Malley LLP.
That's what he said, yeah.
Thank you for inviting me. We finished our field work on the audit, and I just wanted to go over a brief presentation on this year's audit. My name's Don Pearson with Malley LLP. We're a certified public accounting firm out of Oaks, Pennsylvania, and West Chester, Pennsylvania. One thing that I always like to remind the board is that we're auditing your financial statements, so it's management's responsibility to set up internal accounting controls to properly safeguard the assets of the township and to properly report on the financial statements and the financial activities of the township. And we're giving an opinion on your financial statements. Our opinion this year is, again, an unmodified opinion, or what we refer to as a clean opinion. We did the audit in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and we basically give an opinion that your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. The only other difference on the opinion this year, we are, in prior years, the library activities -- library is a component unit of the township. The library activities weren't included in the township audit. This year, they're going to be included. We've received -- well, we believe the library audit's going to be finished May 15th, so it's going to be incorporated in the township's final audit report, just since they're a component unit of the township. A couple of other things on the audit opinion and in the financial statements. When you get the draft, some other things that are what we refer to as required supplemental information that we don't give an opinion on, but we do compare it for consistency with the basic financial statements themselves. One section's management's discussion and analysis. It gives management's comments on why certain assets, where liabilities went up or down, why certain revenues or expenses went up or down, how you compare with budget and actual. That's a very important part of the audit report, and I always encourage you to look at that M-DNA section when you get the draft audit. Again, we talked about responsibilities. This slide here is just a rehash of what he had said earlier. We're providing an opinion on your financial statements to determine that they're prepared in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Couple of the highlights in this year's audit, when you get the numbers. Two of the major highlights is the -- you had a new general obligation bond in 2014 for 9.9 million, and you also had the final condemnation settlement occurred in, I think, February of 2014, and most of the final payouts occurred during 2014. So those are probably the two most significant financial highlights in the audit report. First statement, and this is a condensed statement of net position, this is in what we refer to as the government-wide statements, which are an attempt at showing both the governmental activities and the business-type activities of the township. It shows everything on a accrual basis, and this is a statement as of December 31st, 2014. It's designed to show your assets, your liabilities, and the differences, what we refer to as net position. So on your condensed statement of net position, the governmental activities, which is primarily your general fund, your capital projects fund, most of the general township activities fall under that governmental activities column. The business-type activities column is primarily the sewer fund. So what we're showing is, on a condensed basis, you had current and other assets of 31,870, capital assets of about 55 and 1/2 million. Your liabilities were 61 million, a significant portion of which is made up of long-term debt and your bonds payable. For an ending net position of 25.8 million, the only other thing I always like to remind you of, though, that 25.8 million in net position, 6 million is really unrestricted net position. The remainder is really your net investment in capital assets. So I guess the bottom line, really, that I'm trying to convey is, keep in mind on this schedule, a significant part of your assets are what I'm calling your capital assets, at 55.5 million there, and those aren't cash. It's not something that is, you know, something that you can spend. It's just all of your general fixed asset that's been -- fixed assets that have been capitalized and reported on your statement in that position. On the business-type activities, you have 6 million in current and other assets, 5 million in capital assets. So you have a total of approximately 11 million in total assets. Your liabilities were 513,000. So you have 10.6 in net position there. Again, of the 10.6 million in net position, 5 million of it is your investment in capital assets, so it's not all liquid cash in your net position. And this just shows your net position as it's over the last three years, both for governmental activities and business-type activities. And for the most part, on the business-type activities, your net position is going up a little bit steadily. On the governmental side, your net position has decreased a little bit this year. Primarily, a significant reason for that is we're required to report your net OPEB obligation on an accrual basis, and there's been a decrease in your net position as a result of the difference between what you're paying on your OPEB obligation and the increase in the OPEB obligation for health insurance benefits. On your condensed statement of activities, this just shows your revenues, your expenses, and your change in net position. Unlike the previous schedule, which was as of one day in time, this is your revenues and expenses for the year. On the sewer fund, where the sewer activities, we're showing 4.8 million in revenues. We show 4 million in expenses and also some transfers. So that change in net position that we talked about went from 10.4 million to 10.6 million because you had a net increase in your net position of 184,000. And then on the governmental activity side, showing revenues of 40.3 million, expenses of 44.2 million, transfers in of 600,000. Change in net position is a negative 3.3 million. Again, a significant portion of that is because of the OPEB costs versus the actual amount of cash that you're paying out on your health insurance for the year for retired employees. This is just showing for the last three years, your change in net position on both the business-type activities and the governmental activities. The other thing that I'll go over just briefly is your governmental funds. The one fund that most townships and you probably focus on significantly during the course of the year is your general fund. We were -- general fund is one of your major governmental funds. Your capital projects fund is your other major governmental fund. We also present, in addition to those government-wide statements that I just talked about, separate financial statements on each of your various funds, and we give an opinion on your major funds. Big difference between the government-wide statements and these statements, typically, these are more focused on current resources, cash-in, cash-out type of a situation. And this schedule shows your final budget, your actual budget and your variance for the year. You're showing 39.9 million in total revenue, 41.7 million in expenses, and 877 in other financing sources and uses. So your fund balance on the general fund decreased 937,000. On the left column, you see the final budget. You were budgeting a deficit of 100,000. So your general fund basically showed a variance of about 837,000. Again, the big reason for that on this particular fund, actual versus budget, is the settlement of the bubble gum factory, I think what was budgeted versus the actual expenditure. In particular, I think there was a deposit that had been in the general fund in previous years that was taken in as an expenditure in the current year on our actual column. And this just shows your general fund balance for the last three years. Very important number that a lot of, you know, bond rating agencies and banks will look at, you know, where's our fund balance. Your general fund balance, I think, at the moment is at 13.9 million. The last three years, it was at 12.5 in 2012, 14.8 in 2013, and 13.9 in 2014. I think your general fund balance relative to your total general fund budget is at a pretty healthy level. I think your general fund balance, that 13.9 million that I talked about, is, if you split it out between restrictions, we usually split it out between non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. Portion of your fund balance that's restricted is really restricted from those people outside the township. And then committed and assigned are typically internal restrictions or reservations from either management or the board itself. And then your unassigned balance, your unrestricted portion of your general fund balance is 5.6 million. Couple of other things you'll see in the final report that are always there. There's some additional fund statements about the sewer fund, additional information about your pension trust funds, which show all of the pension assets for your employees, some additional notes to the basic financial statements. One other thing that we do in the audit every year is we audit federal monies that are received by the township. Anytime you receive over 500,000 in federal funding, you're required to have what's referred to as a single audit. So we did the single audit again this year. I think your major program was your CDVG program that you received money on. The thresholds of needing a single audit are going to jump to 750,000 next year from 500,000, and you're just slightly above that. So, you know, there could be a situation in a future year, if your federal funding levels decrease for any reason, that you may not need a single audit. But basically, when we audited your federal awards, you were spending the money the way it was intended to be spent. We didn't have any findings regarding the federal grant agreements, and we were basically giving unmodified or clean opinions on your federal awards as well. We had no difficulties during the audit. Management gave us everything that we asked for. No limitations on the scope of the audit. I appreciate everything management did to provide us what we asked for. And, you know, the last thing, next year, that you'll be looking at for the December 31, 2015 audit, there is going to be some new accounting pronouncements in the way we report on your pensions and your pension liabilities that are on those government-wide financial statements. So that's something that management will be taking a look at during 2015, and it will impact the presentation of your 2015 financial statements. Again, thank you. Unless anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
What did --
What was it you said about the library? That's not complete yet, the audit for the library?
Yeah, we don't do the audit for the library. Other auditors do it, but we can incorporate the library financial statements into the township audit, which we plan on doing. And that should be, it's my understanding, should be prepared and given to us somewhere around May 15th. So we'll be wrapping up the audit.
Thank you.
Later in May.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it. All right, next up, Lieutenant, would you like to give us the crime stats report?
Good evening. For the month of April, we had six residential burglaries, two which were cleared. One was a mistaken identity over on Paddock Road. Cleaning ladies went into the wrong house by mistake, so that was cleared. And the one on Chestnut, 2,500 block of Chestnut, was cleared by arrest. The other burglaries occurred on Central, 500 block of Central, 600 block of Fox Fields, 2,200 block of Brimmar, and the 700 block of Grove. In each of these burglaries, different items were taken, jewelry, laptops, et cetera. They're going for the quick grab and getting out. There's also two attempted burglaries. One was in the 100 block of Washington. This house was currently under renovation. People were not living in it. We believe they were going in for, like, the copper wire or anything they could possibly get out of the house there. And then the 200 block of Campbell, which was probably marked on the rear door that was discovered, we believe may occur sometime overnight. It was discovered in the morning. We also had five burglaries of businesses, which occurred in numerous areas within the township. They're making entry through the back doors of business by prying off the locks or hinges to get access. They're going in for the quick cash and the cash registers and stuff like that. We issued 307 traffic citations, 261 written warnings, and 274 parking tickets for the month, and numerous arrests for different offenses, anywhere from public drunk to assault. But that was basically a busy month for us.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ask a couple of questions?
Yes, of course.
I met with a couple constituents, and they were asking me about the right to know, the Mecklenburg law. Are you guys still issuing that out, or you don't? You never did issue out?
No, we do. If it's a community notification, the community will be notified. A lot of them are not community notifications. What we do is, we get information into the police department, just letting us know if somebody's living there.
Okay.
In town or working in town. It's the two conditions, either living or working in town. But if it's a community notification, that's when we actually physically go out and notify the community. If it's not, they may be listed on there, but it may not be a community notification.
So I guess their question is, and maybe it's not more for you, Lieutenant, maybe it's for the solicitor, the commissioner's responsibility in letting someone know, you know, I said I would check into it. I don't know if we can, outside of what the police already do.
I think, I'm sorry, I think the police are the ones who are supposed to do a notification.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, there were some residents asking, like, can we put that in our newsletter? I mean, I don't think we want to go that far, or it's not our responsibility to really get.
What I would do is, there's a couple of different ways they can go about getting that information. If they want, they can go on the Pennsylvania State Police website under Mecklenburg law. They can research through that. There's also a watchdog website. It's a nonprofit website where you can actually go in and put information in. But there are the two areas where you can find if somebody's on the list, but if they're on that list, doesn't necessarily mean we have to do a community notification. The parameters are set by the state. That information comes down from the state police to us, and if it's a notification, we do the notification.
So the community notification, what other requirements for that?
It all depends what the court says. There are certain tiers that have to be a community notification, and there are some that it's just notice that they're on this list. It all depends on severity of the crime, actually.
Oh, okay. So that drives the community list.
Yes.
Okay. And you're still, are you guys still placing those? I saw it on West Chester Pike about you text, you drive, you--
Yes. There's one out there, and there's one on Darby Road and one on West Chester Pike, and we are doing enforcement.
Very, 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 very good. Very helpful. I think it's a great, great program, what you're doing with those.
Just out of curiosity, Joe, that time, there was a fellow that was close to a school, right? Now, was notification given out because the police did give it out on telephone poles? They marked that, you know, the individual at so-and-so and so-and-so's house has been involved with this and that. Is that because of the law that you're talking about, or is it because he moved in close to a school?
No, it's because of the law.
Okay.
It all depends what type of notification. We've had different offenders living here in town, and if you go on the PSP's website, you'll see the different ones living here in town. But we're strict on what we can do to community notifications.
So basically, you're telling us that the best thing to do is advertise the website, let them go in on the website and check it out?
Yes, you can. It's, there's nothing illegal about going on their website and checking it out.
Yeah, I mean, I know there are different apps, you know, and you can download from, you know, if you have an Apple phone from the store, but, you know, some residents are saying, well, you know, why can't the commissioners, if there's some issue like that, put it in their newsletters? They like the newsletters, but they wanted more information, and, you know.
The answer is legality.
Yeah, no, I got it. I got it. I'm just making sure it's out there, and we'll put the, you know, certainly put the state's website, I guess, in our newsletter, if we can. Lori, is she still here?
Yeah.
Hey, you're hiding. I guess in our next newsletter, for all of us, if the whole board agrees with that, I mean, you know, we could put a link to that for residents. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Free to go. The discussion on the telecommunications ordinance, would you like to speak to that, Chris?
Yeah, we're going to move that to next month because I won't be here next week, and I believe there are a couple of people that would like to come and express themselves on, about the discussion.
Okay, so we'll move that to June?
Thank you.
Already done that? Jim, you want to?
On the, on--
On the sign code.
Yeah, on the sign ordinance, you know, we still remember back in January when we, there was a decision in the billboard case, which is still under appeal, and, you know, part of that was to, part of the decision that we made at that time was to revisit our sign ordinance. So we have drafted an initial sign ordinance, and what I would ask the Board of Commissioners to do is to review it, and if there are any questions, then I think that that's probably, at this point in time, a discussion we'd want to have in executive session because of the pending litigation. So, you know, certainly, we could meet an executive session to discuss it, or in the meantime, during, you know, if you ever want to pick up the phone and call me and ask me some questions about it, I'm happy to do that, but I don't think it's--
Appropriate to talk about.
Yeah, I don't think it's time yet to talk about it.
All right. Is there anything else?
Who's that going to be on for Monday night? Do you want us to review between now and Monday night?
Yeah, between now and then, and if you have any questions, give me a call.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, everything else is a second reading, so.
All right, that's taken care of. Yep, everything's second reading.
Emergency road repairs on Highland?
Yeah, we don't, we, as you are aware, we usually do a road program every year. Unfortunately, the road conditions along Highland Avenue are so bad that they're actually, the road is actually crumbling apart. Our engineers, as well as Mr. Doherty, viewed it, and unfortunately, it cannot wait until 2016. So that will be the only road that will be done this year. We have three emergency quotes, because, again, it's an emergency, and we'll have the quotes and next agenda, or for next Monday night. You'll see what the lowest responsible, roughly about $55,000. And I do have the funds for it.
So, Larry, are we not doing any of the roads because of the budget, or--
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have any capital funds budgeted for. We usually don't do a road program.
I guess for this, you know, for the potholes, the state, are we still doing that? You announced that, that the state was going to--
We put it, I put it on every form of communication tool that we had. Twitter has been on breaking news for several weeks. We did handouts. It's been on Facebook, and we've seen little to no work done in Haverford Township.
So they will--
As well as other communities as well.
They're following the blue route today.
Yeah.
Or blocking.
But they're, the way I understand it, is Pendot is overwhelmed, and they're going to be issuing contracts with private contractors to do the work on the state roads.
I thought they were going to let the townships do it and reimburse you guys penny for penny. They hold out on that?
No, we, no, we, when sign had paper, right? Yeah, we, that was initial discussion, and my concern was a liability.
Okay.
And then they actually never even felt, I believe that they, the same, they received the same response from all the other townships. And, you know, when does it become, all of a sudden, now, we make, if we do get reimbursed, then you have someone who's injured, or there's an accident as a result of that repair that falls back on the township?
Takes the workers' comp.
Who's taking all that liability? In addition to that, then where does it end? You know, all of a sudden, are we buying that road? And I think Pendot realized that that wasn't, that wasn't going to be an option for them, and that's why they issued this. It actually came from the governor's office.
All right, so to be clear, it's not only our township, Springfield Township, everybody's having issues, right?
Uh, yeah. Not only in Delaware County, but Chester County.
Throughout the state.
It's everywhere in the Commonwealth there, and I am concerned that we've seen no movement on Marple Road and Darby Creek Road.
Yeah.
Or early to noon.
Nothing. There's some signs up there.
I'm not here to beat up Pendot, but I haven't received any response from my emails to the Delaware County District Supervisor, phone calls. I wish I can get away with that every day.
I don't want to beat up on Pendot, but constituents sure beat me up every time they hit a pothole.
Yeah.
So, but the thing is, it, these hazards are still out there.
Mm-hmm. So-- What I tell, it's not in our township roads. The only township road is Highland Avenue. Anything that we can fair, repair on our roads.
But they give a window of when these, this contract would go out?
You remember, it's good for us to remind the community, since 2007, we've invested nothing less than $8 million. I don't think in this town, in the history of this township, has invested $8 million bucks in repairs on township roads. I can guarantee you, this township's never invested that much money. And then next year, we'll do probably about another $1 million worth of roads. So our township roads are fine, but unfortunately, I continue to receive emails and calls from residents concerned about the state roads, and my response now is I either give them Pendot's number or contact one of their state representatives.
So why don't we, as a board, sign off on a letter to our state representatives?
It's not going to be good. You certainly can't.
Well, you know, but, but, we don't know. It may, it may move them, as a board. We could say we discussed it in a work session. Our residents are very upset. I mean, you know, I don't know what their plan is, but they're Pendot. It's like Chris said, I don't want to beat up a Pendot, but our residents drive these roads and say to us, like--
They're going to, they're going to tell you what's actually right on that table right next to you. That's what they're going to tell you what your plan is. You see on the desk that was--
Right next to you.
Oh. You want me to hand this out, or?
Well, I, all the board did get that at one point, but that's, that's what they're going to tell you that their plan is.
Right.
A contract.
Yep.
To a private contractor.
And with Marple-- Pendot, I'm not, I'm talking about Pendot, not us. You know, Pendot, you think there'd be better planning, you know, it snows. It snows, and you're going to have bad winters, and you're going to have winters that aren't that bad, but what are you doing in the case when you have winters? I mean, Glendale's still awful.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't get it. They wait until, until we get into such a situation that they have to hire contractors?
Steve, the problem is, you've never worked for an authority. Pendot's like an authority, and they don't follow up very well.
You mean, I've never worked for them?
Pardon?
Well, I didn't hear what you said.
No, I say Pendot is like an authority, and when you're dealing with an authority, it's not like dealing with somebody in just business.
No, I get that, but we, our residents pay taxes, and they have a right to safe roads, and some of these roads aren't safe. I mean, I've driven on Marple Road, that's not safe. Glendale Road's becoming unsafe.
I totally agree with you, you know.
People, I'm actually watching people in the morning cross over the line with other cars coming the other way, not to hit a pothole.
We do it on Arlington Road every day. Arlington Road does that. I was the guy.
That's what I'm saying. Somebody's going to get killed. There's, there's got to be an aggressive--